You're not supposed to have all the jobs at once. Call the meeting to order and if I can find my agenda here, we'll all stand up and do the pledge of allegiance. Okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wes, would you call the roll please?
Okay, Councilmember Dumas.
Here.
Councilmember Elwood.
Here.
Councilmember Graves.
Here.
Councilmember Mills.
Here.
Councilmember Pittman.
Here.
All present.
We have a forum and I'll just say before we get started that Dan is on vacation right now, so he will be back tomorrow and he asked me to run the meeting tonight in his absence. So that's why I'm filling in. And okay, we have an agenda before us.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Can I make a suggestion that we move old business after new business? So that we can take care of the new things and then talk about the trash deal? Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Your loss.
Do it.
Okay.
And I make a motion, will you approve the agenda as modified?
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you.
That was Ken.
Ken first and that's it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we have minutes. Anyone want to make a motion to approve the minutes? We have minutes for the August 16th council meeting and the August 25th workshop.
I'll move that we approve the August 16th, August 25th minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Lynn made the motion, Ken seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't think we have any ceremonials, recognitions, proclamations, or memorials, do we?
Did he, was that, was his motion to do both sessions of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I missed that.
Okay. So I don't believe we have any of those things to recognize. So we'll move on to recording. Wes, you want to talk about the financial status?
Yes. I will begin with the balance sheet. These are August 31st numbers. In debate, we had $324,486. $173,648 of that was general fund. $75,000 general fund reserve. And there's $75,039 in the street fund. In the general fund, the receipts for the month were $28,300. $23,000 of that was our share of accounting sales tax. $1,939 was municipal aid from the state. And 2018, 2018 was in permits. Expenses totaled $12,423. So the revenue exceeded expenditures by $15,580 for the month. There were no, was no income or expenses in the reserve fund. The street fund, the receipts were $20,034 for the month. $1,730 of that was our share of county property taxes. The expenses totaled $3,400, which was the payment for a half of the maintenance work on the state line.
Just half? Just half?
That was the first, we paid half upfront and then
He still has.
The other half when he'd finished. And that was according to the contract with him. So expenses or income exceeded expenses by $16,634 for the month. Leaving the $75,839. Questions?
I have one question. I saw we bought a laptop computer for, was that, was that for the?
I think that one was for, the last one was for David.
Why, why, why was that so expensive?
They were about the same price.
Huh?
Both Aaron's and David's were the same price.
We made almost $2,000 for a laptop, why?
They were tablets.
Special software or what?
That were enabled them to go out into the field.
It's not a laptop, it's a tablet you can hold in your hand and work.
Well, it said laptop.
They're not, they're not office type machines. They're more the kind you carry on the road with.
It said laptop and I was wondering why we think that.
We went with Microsoft Surface Pros.
Did I buy one totally appropriate brand in your roots?
My ignorance, I guess.
Huh?
My ignorance if I called it a laptop.
Okay. It was a workstation or something.
It operates as a laptop.
You could take that out.
Yeah.
I should take it anywhere I want to. Can I move?
No.
I was told you could take the camera.
Okay, I know it's a different, specialized, not just a regular laptop.
That would be Dan too.
I move that we.
That's the only question I have.
I move that we accept the financials.
Second. Moved and seconded that we accept the financial reports, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that was Lynn made the motion and Jerry seconded. Okay. Do we have any report from the economic committee, Jerry?
Yes. About two weeks ago, state announced a new broadband dispersment. And Rodney said that it looks promising for us, as did Sandy Martin, who's Eureka's background development director, who also chairs the C3, Holiday Island, Eureka, Red Forest, Berryville. Rodney invited the newly hired director of broadband, rural route broadband for Arkansas, to come speak to the C3, which is the, the space monkey scandal now. Anyway, he like set that up and I think it's, it's either next week or the week after, to where he will tell us what it means for the projects that we've been watching, our grants that we've applied for. That one encouraging thing I think about possible good news is that we were told, if you remember, that they, that sets new criteria up. We were still alive and we could hear something in late August or September, so we're hearing something, so.
It's good, even if it's a couple of months later.
But anyways, I mean, I was reading on Facebook today, I think we're still looking for an adequate provider.
Still an issue, that's for sure. Thanks Jerry, anything else other than that on the economic side? Economic development?
No, I just, you know, people would support our local restaurants, can do for the most part.
Yeah.
They're struggling.
I know, it's going to get harder.
Yep.
They have to go in and order winner.
Yeah.
Okay, how about the planning commission?
The secretary is working on documents that, documents and forms that the soon to be adopted planning and zoning regulations call for. And I'm working on putting those together, modeling them after a couple of other communities that I see some commonality in. I'm going to develop flow charts for the various processes that we have to go through. Like if you're going to file a, want to file a conditional use application, how do you, what do you go through and what has to happen? And then I'm also looking at sections that we reserve for future analysis for adoption, like subdividing lots and commercial things that we didn't consider in the first group of first 45 pages of regulations. So that's on my table for next meeting.
I like the idea of the flow charts because I think that really helped with the building, building code, the document that was Dan first put out there before we adopted all the building codes too. Because that little flow chart page was real helpful as to how you get a building permit.
True.
Yeah.
I plan to develop those and bring them to the planning commission for review and approval.
So when's that next planning commission meeting?
Be the second Tuesday of October.
Okay. Okay, now we're, we'll move on and take care of our new business. So the first item under new business, maybe the only item, oh, there's two items, is the second reading of the zoning ordinance. And if, for those of you who have an agenda and a computer, I put a link in the agenda to that ordinance if anyone wants to know where it is or needs to read it. So do I have a motion to approve ordinance 2022-006 on second reading? Do we need to read the line one of the hearing, do you think?
I think we do, because we have to read it. I can read the ordinance and then we can make a motion to accept it.
Make a motion to read it.
I can make a motion that we have the second reading of ordinance 2022.006.
I'll second it.
Okay. Ken made it, Ken seconded.
I'll read it.
And now you can move.
Ordinance 2022-6, an ordinance adopting planning and zoning regulations in order to clarify zoning regulations establishing fees and penalties for violation thereof and for other purposes of the city of Holiday Island. Whereas pursuant to ACA 1456-416, the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, has determined it necessary to develop zoning regulations for the entire planning area of Holiday Island to provide districts of compatible uses for unified development for the elimination of nonconformance and other matters of general welfare for the city. And whereas pursuant to ACA 1456-422, public notice was given to the city's intent to adopt planning and zoning regulations, a planning zoning map and a zoning map table, and advised that copies of the documents were available on the city website for public review and examination. And whereas after due notice, as required by law, the HICPC, held a public hearing for all persons who desiring to be heard regarding certain new planning and zoning regulations, zoning map and zoning map table. And whereas after thorough consideration of comments and views expressed by all interested parties, said HICPC by resolution HICPC R22-5 on August 10, 2022, has certified, adopted, and recommended that said planning and zoning regulations, zoning map and zoning map table should be considered for adoption by the city council of Holiday Island. Whereas all comments, views, suggestions, and recommendations have been considered and addressed by the city council. And whereas the city council of Holiday Island now finds it to be in the best interest of the citizens of Holiday Island and desires to adopt said planning and zoning regulations in its entirety, including the zoning map and zoning map table by ordinance, to better provide for the clarification of terms and uses of zoning regulations. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, section one, that the documents entitled planning and zoning regulations, the zoning map and the zoning map table attached hereto and made a part of this ordinance are hereby adopted. Section two, that all resolutions, ordinances, and parts of ordinances in conflict hereof, to the extent of such conflict, are hereby repealed. Section three, that in the event that any section, paragraph, subdivision, clause, phrase, definition, fee, fine, or other provisions or portion of this ordinance or the planning and zoning regulations or the zoning map or zoning map table have and shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance as a whole or any part of it or provision other than the part so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional. The remaining provisions of this ordinance shall be construed as if such invalid, unenforceable, or unconstitutional provision or provisions have never been contained herein. Section four, that the city recorder treasurer shall maintain two signed copies of this ordinance, kept on file in the office of the city recorder treasurer in the city office, 110 Woodstale Drive, Holiday Island, Arkansas, in a digital image for public inspection on the city website, passed and approved by the city council of Holiday Island on this date. That concludes the reading of the resolution and then the attached regulations, 55 pages, the attached map, and the attached 110 pages of table are included.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 2022-006?
Ken, a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 2022-006.
Second.
Ken made the motion, Jerry seconded. All in favor? Oh, yeah, we do the wrong call vote.
Yeah.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor?
Okay.
And we have to have a third meeting, right?
Right.
Thirty days after that.
At the next meeting.
Or is it?
Any, is, just whenever the next meeting is, it doesn't have to be 30 days.
No, I say is there a 30-day waiting period after it becomes effective on the third meeting?
Okay, we'll move on to the sheriff's contract. On the agenda is a vote, a vote to affirm, reaffirm, resolution 2022-005, which is for the sheriff's contract. It contained originally, that resolution contained originally, a draft contract, which has been now modified by the county and come back to us with some modifications. Did everyone have a chance to look at those modifications?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And.
Is there, is, do I have a motion to put this on the table for discussion before we vote?
Put it on the table.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second that motion. Ken made the motion. Okay, everybody's read it? It looked okay to me.
Yeah, I read it.
I read it and it, other than that they raised the cost. Probably, and they, you know, they will not enforce our ordinances.
Yeah, I kind of knew that was probably in line.
Well, that was the main sticking point with the county prosecuting attorney.
Madam Mayor, I think that it's premature to take any vote. We've been down this road before. The court of court, it's never even come to a vote. HICID has never approved it. I mean, and we're just.
Somebody's got to, we got to go first though.
We've been first every time. And I just.
I, I would vote to accept it as it is with you. I don't think there's a, I don't remember there being a date of the vote. And I talked, I called Jack Beaton last week and talked to him about it. And it seems everything has been, everybody within the county has read it, agreed with it. Other than, he said he needed to take it to the city. I would accept it with, with the caveat that instead of being the first, being in effect the first of January, they make it effective the first of November.
I got, I got the impression it would be effective as soon as all parties approved it. Yeah.
Look, that's, that's how, that's how it all of it is.
That's how it should be, but that ain't how they're.
But that's not the way it was worked?
I mean, I'd be willing to go along with it if, if it's, I don't think of approving a draft of an ordinance, a resolution form carries any weight. So if it goes before the foreign court, then it would ice it up.
It used to go to the foreign court in their October. And be accepted the first of November with, the hangup is the second deputy. They're not going to put the second deputy on until the new sheriff comes in and. I, I, if we want to, if we want to get to where we can enforce our ordinance, we need to get this contract signed.
I think all we're saying by our approval is that we are okay with the language that's in it, right? The terms in it.
Right.
As it exists in this.
I don't think there was a, there was not a effective name.
Paragraph 11, that's a blank line to fill in, effective date.
Yeah, all I'm saying is I, I would accept it with the caveat that would make it effective the first of November with one deputy. And we start paying for the second deputy in January, or whenever they can actually do it.
Yeah, it wouldn't be until the other person got hired.
And you're not going to get the second deputy till a new sheriff comes.
And they may put that stipulation in at any time.
Well, I think it was in here that if there's only one deputy, we only pay for one.
We only pay for one, right. And so I see, I see no problem with having just one. But we have to have this contract in effect if we're going to get the district court set up.
Well, and we've got 90 days to get a car and equipment too.
Right, after the second deputy comes on, or whenever. So I, you know, that would be the only thing that I would like to see this pushed for, is have it approved in the October foreign court. And he effective the first of November.
I certainly, I think that's what it's on target for.
I, I didn't get, I didn't get that idea talking to Jack, okay?
Oh, okay.
Now I would go back and talk to him again, you know. We pretty much have to do something tonight if they're going to deal with it in October. Well, we can approve, we can go ahead, we can go ahead and do it. The mayor will be authority to go ahead and sign it as it is.
Yeah, all we have to say is we agree to these terms.
And authorize Dan to sign it.
And it'll include that we want it to be in effect.
Right.
In November.
Right.
I'm guessing that's what they intended because they put 2022 in the date field.
I didn't get that expression. And I, we've been fighting this damn thing for over a year now. I'm tired of this going forever, we're going to have to. And there's, there's.
Well, all I say is if we don't approve it tonight, it just drags it out longer.
Yes. If we can, if we can put that language in of that, that we, I don't know how you want to word it, but that.
We're just putting November in, it's in the line.
We're voting to authorize Dan to sign it. And now it's of the resolution itself, we can make a modification of it if we want to.
Okay, not make a modification to the contract maybe, why? We can't do our resolution, we can't, yeah, that's.
We can, we can, our resolution is, I don't know if we want it.
Resolve, allow Dan to sign it with the stipulation that it's effective November. That's fine, or stipulation is too, it's tough a word.
It's, it's possible that the board of commissioners might have an issue with it or the court of court might have an issue with it, that we make it not go into effect.
We have to deal with that issue, but that's our, that would be, what we're saying is that is our. Well, can we not leave it at that's, that's our preference? Kind of give Dan a little wiggle room, takes his to put up.
Well, I mean, somebody's got to go first or this is.
Well, we've been talking about this for a year. We don't do something that's going to go on for another year.
This is what we want to see.
That's what I want to see. This is what we would like to see. However you want to word it, you know. Okay. Grab something up the way you want it worded.
Say something like encouraging is done.
Encouraged is not a good term for a contract.
It's not a contract, it's a resolution.
It's a resolution.
Well, yeah.
It doesn't bind anybody.
So you don't want, you're not necessarily changing the contract.
No.
Well, then we'd have to go back and draft a whole new resolution.
Blank.
Because it's an existing resolution that's on the floor.
With a blank.
With a blank, yeah.
I would argue that we can fill in that blank.
That the contract would be substantially the same. That's what the resolution says.
I never saw it moving.
We approved it April 1st.
Yeah, you'd think I got a memorandum of April.
Yes.
I'll read you the resolution.
Okay, there we go.
Resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Carroll County in the Holiday Island suburban improvement district at HICID for law enforcement services and to take all other measures necessary. Whereas the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, believes that it is in the best interest of the citizens of Holiday Island to enter into an agreement for law enforcement services in the form, or in a form substantially similar to the attached agreement for law enforcement services. And whereas pursuant to the authority authorized in the inter-local cooperation act, the parties to the agreement have set forth their respective duties, obligations, and responsibilities with respect to law enforcement services. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Holiday Island as follows. Section one, that the agreement between the city of Holiday Island, Carroll County, and HICID is hereby ratified and approved as in the form or substantially similar to the form as attached hereto to exhibit, as exhibit A. Section two, the mayor and the city recorder treasurer are hereby authorized and directed to execute the agreement on behalf of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, or to approve and make necessary changes to the same and to take any and all necessary action as may be required to implement the provisions of said agreement. And it was passed and approved by the city council for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, the first day of April, 2022.
So with the, with the language in that section two, it allows us to adopt a new version of the agreement that we've got here in front of us tonight. So in our reference in our motion, it has to, I think, has to state that it's dated August 4th, 2022, so we know what version we're adopting.
August 4th?
That's the date on the document that I got. Is that the version that you have? The sheriff's agreement that we're reviewing, it's not dated on the document itself, it's the file name.
Oh, the file?
Mm-hmm, that was sent to us.
Well. Which if you will remember, we got a second email when the first one was sent saying that the mayor sent that out without reading it and he got something that made him send out a different one.
That was a modification of his proposal.
I still, I don't, I still don't see anything that, I mean, all we're talking about here is trying to get an implementation date, which is not mentioned anywhere.
Right.
Other than it's a fill-in with one.
Why don't we have the minutes reflect?
That's all, I think we would like to see it.
This, this would be for BJ's benefit. Have the minutes reflect that the council, and we can make a motion on this, but the council would like the contract to go into effect immediately upon the signatures of all three parties. Is that stated?
As soon as possible.
As soon as November the 1st?
Well, it depends on if all parties have signed it by then or not.
Well, they can. Well, yeah, but they may not.
Well, that's our preference.
That's our preference, but they, what?
Is November 1st a deadline for somebody?
No, it's not. That's our preference, it's not, it's not a deadline. If, if they can't do it November first, but they could get it done by December first, but what?
If, if what, if what Dan says is true, and they might misled him, that everybody is signing on to this, which they have in the past.
Kind of verbally, yeah.
Yeah. And so I, I don't see any reason that we shouldn't encourage.
Okay.
I mean.
Why, why did you make the motion, Jerry, of what you'd like the minutes to reflect? And what all of them?
Read the quote, says the, the blank.
The blank?
Yeah.
Section eleven of the agreement?
Yeah.
Actually, the very first paragraph. This agreement for law enforcement services, the agreement is made and entered this blank day of blank by and between. And then in, uh, eleven, there's another blank line. So there's two places where it mentions effective date.
Okay, so the first paragraph and then section eleven?
Yes. And, and a point to be made, this contract offers a sheriff-elect, it doesn't have to wait till November, it could be done this week.
Well, it, it has to be approved by the court.
Right, but it doesn't have to wait.
Third Monday of October.
Okay, so it could happen this month. The third Monday of this month hasn't happened yet. Yes, it is yesterday, I'm sorry.
I would see it as the date in the first paragraph could differ from the effective date in paragraph eleven.
That's true. Okay.
Because today's date would be.
Cause the first paragraph is the date of the contract, paragraph eleven is when it's effective.
We at least want paragraph eleven to show.
As soon as November first.
Yeah. Can you make a motion to that sector?
Uh, I'll make a motion if we fill in the blank on number eleven as, uh, uh, effective, uh, as soon as November the first.
Do I have a second?
I'm thinking, I know that hurts, but I'm thinking.
Uh, discussion? Jerry, the election is November eighth, is that an important date? Are you tying it to election day?
Yeah, we won't have a sheriff elect until.
Nope.
Hey.
And he's running out of hoes through there, there is no.
Right, he's a sheriff-elect, he won't take office until November eighth.
No, he doesn't take office till first.
He won't take a last.
January?
Till January.
Oh, okay.
Sheriff-elect until January first.
Okay.
There's no bearing on it.
And he, and he has, he, I mean, I mean.
What we're trying to do is get, get the contract signed so that we can move forward and get the district court set up.
I, I mean, we first discussed this contract of a meeting with then, uh, sheriff in September of twenty twenty-one, a full year, and we don't have a contract.
There's no reason why we can't move forward.
But we're faced with making a decision today about something, so.
Call the vote.
What do we need to do?
Well, we've got a motion, a second, or a fourth, we need to vote.
A vote?
What we.
A jury's motion.
November first thing, or just a?
Well, okay, the motion I made was to make that paragraph eleven reflect that our preference is that this contract be executed as soon as November the first.
And then what happens if it's not?
We can't do that because you can't put a preference in a contract.
This is in a contract.
The, the. Paragraph eleven is in a contract.
So that's in the contract, we're changing the direction.
It says contract for deputy services on the, the page.
Oh, yeah. No, what's, we, what we're trying to do is approve a resolution for Dan to sign. And we can put the preference in that, cause it's not binding what we'd like, but I don't want him to, I don't wanna tie him up so that if they can't get it done November first, what are we gonna do then?
Okay, if, if we.
Why can't we leave the resolution to? Leave it alone. Leave that alone.
Put it in the minutes.
And put it in the minutes, if that's our preference.
That's exactly what.
And approve the resolution as it sits.
Yes.
And he'll know what our, I mean, he knows what our preference is.
All right, I withdraw my second of the, uh, motion.
Okay.
We don't even vote or anything.
If we don't get a second, then we, we.
We need to approve the resolution. And we did do that.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I, I second what you mean.
So, we have a motion to approve the resolution again, with this new draft contract.
Yes.
And a second, so we can make the motion. Jerry seconded it?
Roll call vote.
Uh, roll call vote.
And the minute, the minutes will reflect.
I think after we do the roll call vote, we will make a motion that the minutes reflect our preference.
That, that sounds okay to me.
I think that'll make everybody happy. Okay.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwin.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
All in favor?
Uh, Lynn, you wanna make a motion that we put a preference for an implementation of that resolution in that contract as early as November first?
I can do that.
Into the minutes?
I move that we, we encourage the mayor to agree to this agreement for an effective date of November first, twenty twenty-two, and it's reference to a document sent to us on August fourth, twenty twenty-two. That's the version that we're considering tonight.
Anyone second that?
I'll second that.
Good. And I think we can just do a all in favor on that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Was it now?
No.
Okay.
So that was five to zero.
Five to zero. Okay. We got through that, thank you.
We adjourned now.
We're almost there. Uh, we're gonna go now to the, uh, that's all of our new business. So, we're gonna go back to old business and talk about enforcement of ordinance two oh two two dash oh oh four, solid waste collection and disposal, uh, which went into effect September first, the first of this month. And this is just for discussion because we received from Carroll County Solid Waste a file of supposedly containing those residences by address that had not yet signed up with Carroll County Solid Waste for service. And you wanna, uh, Ken, you asked for this to be on the agenda, you wanna take this discussion?
I got a copy of that, I looked at it, it said it, it was based in order of meters, I guess, water meters. And I sorted it into alphabetical, uh, by name, and went down through it. And then I spread it out a little bit to, because the file did have the, the address of the meter, and then it had the owner's address, and there's, there's a significant number of them that have addresses that are not within the island corporate, which somehow or another, we've got to come up with the process of weeding out legitimate part timers, the Airbnb people, and then, and, and come up with the people that have chosen not to, uh, participate in the program. And, uh, right now, there's like four hundred some names on that list. Uh, and we have no, no procedure.
Yes.
To try and figure out what we're doing. And, um, I think it's time that we come up with procedures. Uh, to, you know, figure out who the part timers are, and because I went down to put some cardboard in the cardboard box today, and I raised the lid on earth, it is packed full, you can't get another bag in there. And I don't think there's tag born in there. Uh, so we have a lot of people, uh, we, you know, we set up the part time thing to give people, you know, make it convenient and equitable to part time people. Uh, however, um, uh, I think we've probably got somewhere between two and three hundred part time people. And how many of you have buying bags? Twenty?
Twenty.
Five days. Probably have sold thirty-three sheets of five, but, you know, and then half of the people are buying two sheets.
Well, I mean, how many people have signed up, come down and signed up? Because we are registering these people so that we can, you know, notify Carroll County that these people are not going to sign up. And so there, there's.
Well, I don't think we're doing that, we're not doing anything.
I?
We're not doing anything.
I know we're not doing anything, that's why I wanted to do, wanted to, but I think, I think that we really, all we need to do is, is re- realize there's a problem and move it to the workshop next week and try to come up with some processes.
That's a workshop for budget.
Well, I know.
Do you wanna change it?
I wanna, I want this added to it, I, I don't think we're gonna sit here and come up with the processes.
Well, I don't think that that's appropriate that we do that at this meeting, but what the, what you just raised and what I'm about to, I think we need to discuss.
I mean, the other, you know, we need to get, I mean, we said, we, we spent six, seven months setting this dang thing up. We got it in, we got a deadline, and there are people that have chosen not to wait. But we don't know who they are, and we're not making any effort to make.
Well, it's gonna take some work to figure out who is actually not receiving service. I have verified one name that I spotted on there who's been a Carroll County customer for more than fifteen years, and their name is on the list.
Well, Wes, we, we set a deadline of September the first. We advertised that a couple of ways, like ninety days ago. Like, we let September first come and go. No, I mean, we had people all over social media saying, by God, I'm not gonna do it. We've got one of the, the, uh, uh, outside people, or, uh, meeting with people here to see what they can do to continue service, and then we're gonna wait and do something in October? I, I mean, we put those, we put those things down there, and I, I think Lynn's checked them, and, and, uh, Ken's checked them, uh, and every time, there's no evidence of any tags in there, and.
Can I ask a question, do you that have been down there, cause I haven't been down there? Is there a sign on that?
There's a big sign there.
Says bag tags on it?
Bag tags on it, and perpetrator will be prosecuted under ordinance.
And that's the other thing.
That's what I was wondering.
But what, you know, I know we don't wanna respond on social media, but these people are just mocking us, and, and we let it, we let it go, and we've not told people what the fines will be, what the consequences will be.
Fines are in the home?
They're not, you know, they're not, for the ordinance, it doesn't say anything about finding, I don't know. But I can, I can't find any.
Yeah, it does.
No, it doesn't.
Well, we, we, they had until September one, so we really couldn't do anything till September one.
We shouldn't have let September one go without any mention of it, or additional warnings.
How would we, what would you suggest?
Well, we post things on about six different social medias saying, you know, tonight's a meeting, uh, meeting next week. I think that what, I mean.
I'm, I'm just saying that we need, we're, we're, we've gone past the deadline two, two weeks, three weeks, and we have no, we have no process in place to figure out, to sort through this and figure out who's who. And we're gonna have to have a, a list of the part timers to throw back, and, and when they do that, they sign up, so we know who they are.
Dan's, Dan's keeping a list of the people that are signing up.
I know he is.
So are you adding to that list for the people you guys?
He's giving the sheets. I'm giving him the sheets that they fill out.
For his list.
For his list.
See, I was wondering if, if, if just, uh, Joe Blow and people are doing it, and the people that are legitimately buying tags come and they're, it's filled up. Yeah, I can't believe that we, you know, check it two or three times and still can't see it.
Anyway, all, all I'm saying is, we need to come up with, we don't have any procedures to interact with the district to, to get funnel, uh, drops and, and ads to, what, you know?
I, I would have assumed that they're feeding them continuously updates on the water.
I don't think it's happening, okay?
That needs to be.
All I'm saying is, we need this, we need, we need a work session to send that.
We do need a work session, I agree.
Yeah, we also need security cameras down there, we're not gonna catch.
That's good idea.
I was gonna come up with. Well, I mean, Lynn suggested that.
I thought they put one on the cardboard.
No, no.
Not yet.
True.
That's another thing that we need to talk about.
I mean, anyway.
I mean, it's an issue, we need to address it, and, and we can't do it here tonight, but I would like to see that in that, in that work session we're gonna have next week, we need to talk about it a little bit again.
Maybe we need to do that before we split our budget.
I don't, I think we can do both.
Is our co-enforcement, is he, is he enforcing anything at all?
No.
I think he's.
I think right now he's taking the roll calls.
Why?
I think that's another reason why we need to share a contract, okay? Yeah, well, that's.
Well, that, that's a lame excuse that we need a sheriff's contract for that purpose, because.
I didn't say.
I, I know you did say it, but.
Well, I think you're right, Jerry, on that myself, because I think, uh, the co-enforcement officer could, at the very least.
He can get a site, Dan.
Sign him, uh, with a letter.
And, 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 you know, there're gonna be people that thunder his nose, their nose at him, but there will be a significant number that will clean up, or pay up, or whatever, but there is no reason to have him sit on his thumbs.
Well, we, we don't know exactly if he's sitting just on.
Let me bring up another thing. Assume that at some point in time, we're able to identify and separate all these, the different situations, and there are still gonna be a few people that whatever they do with the garbage, we don't know, but they're not using Carroll County. I don't think the ordinance that we wrote gives us anything, any.
Well, I didn't think it does.
Where, tell me where.
I don't have it.
I do, I'll read it to you. And this is the section nine penalty, any individual found to be disposing of solid waste in a manner not permitted by this government. You can't say because they don't sign up for Carroll County, and we don't know what they do with the waste, that we're assuming they're not disposing of it. I mean, that's, I don't think you can make that assumption, they may be taking it all with them to Kansas City.
That's not, that's not allowed.
I, I understand that, but what are you gonna do about it? I don't think that that says that we can do anything about it. Read here. Read section nine.
Also, Pat, in section one, paragraph two, it says, solid waste collection by a city-approved contractor is mandatory for any property.
Yeah, and then what?
With a meter installed.
And then what? We don't, we don't, I'm saying, I didn't say we don't do that, we say that's mandatory. And then later on, I think in that same section, we say, and can be fined according to, but there is no, there is no later in this thing defines that.
It says section nine penalty confines.
Yeah, and read it, it doesn't say.
It says, any individual found to be disposing.
Bound to be.
In a manner not permitted.
Okay. What?
Shall be guilty of a misdemeanor.
So if they're burning garbage in their bag.
With fire.
Or they're throwing it in a ditch, we can find them, but if they take it back to Kansas City, do you think that's strong enough to say we could do something about it?
Yeah.
I don't think so.
It's, it's a manner not permitted.
What?
Because they're not.
We don't know what they're doing with it, you can't go forward and say, because we don't know what you're doing with it, it's a manner that we don't approve of.
We, we, we say for the manners which are acceptable for them to dispose of it, and if they're not. I don't think it's, I mean, we say for the manners which are acceptable for them to dispose of it, and if they're not following that, we don't care what they're doing with it.
Uh, maybe, maybe Dan needs to run an eye.
I'm just saying, I don't think that's strong enough, I don't think you're gonna wanna go argue that. That section gives you the right to do something to somebody that were, is not signed up for Carroll County.
Well, it says someplace in here.
No, it doesn't, but the contractor, if there's a contractor hauling garbage, we can do something. If you're burning garbage or disposing of it improperly, we can do something under our ordinance, but if you just refuse to sign up and do something else, what are you gonna?
Regardless of whether it is or not, but we can.
What's my man up?
Well, I, that's something, I'm just bringing this up for discussion, this is what we gotta look at, what we're going to do with that. Is there going to be a number that say, you know?
Yeah.
So you you can, we had posted that agenda, you know.
But we don't have an agenda yet.
Yeah, yeah, just put that on there.
Work the line for agenda.
Yeah, look, there are a lot of things on that.
And also, I, um, as far as that list goes, I think there are a number of. I used to travel it.
There's some other issues in that list, that are not.
I saw, I saw an address on Ballin that was Ballin, B A L L I N Y, therefore it was kicked out.
But there was also in that ordinance, or we, and I know we discussed it, that the the B M Bs and the people that are doing, you know, cleanups of the units and just taking their trash, they're supposed to come down here and register the units that are uh taken care of, so that we can.
I don't think that was ever put, written anywhere.
Where are you reading that?
Yeah.
I even did, it's there.
Got it, if you wanna read it.
I am, I'm going to read it when I get home.
Okay, but I'm just saying, I don't think it's there, I think we discussed it, but I don't think it's in there.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we have a workshop.
And I'm not disagreeing with you.
Because we, we, we didn't.
I just don't assume we've done something, will we have it?
Mr. Elwin, you can look at section six, paragraph B, and it talks about commercial BRBOs and short-term rentals.
Or some general.
Okay, that's just, yeah.
Okay.
And I think, I thought, do we, does that not say that we're, they're supposed to notify us of their customers?
I don't know, let me reread that, if you're reading B.
Yes, sir.
I guess I could sign on the contractor.
It's it's on our website.
I had no idea.
Yeah.
Anyway, anyway, we're we're getting into, I, no, I.
I just think tonight, we need to outline something we need to discuss, that is, we're not gonna solve any problems.
Well, I don't want to, we can't, we can't.
So we're putting them on the record tonight in the minutes, when they're recording.
And recommend that we have, add that to.
Dan will be here tomorrow, he can re-brought the.
Add it to the work.
It goes to work, let's not authorize any more vacations.
Uh, we need to add it to the workshop agenda.
Okay.
This is gonna be a great workshop.
You got a great outline for the workshop, right?
Yeah, that I will have to miss.
It's supposed to be about budgeting, but.
I would anything.
What is that? We might take, we might have to have.
Might have to have two workshops.
Okay.
Okay.
Or put a budget off.
So, did we pretty much beat that horse to death?
I think so.
I think.
I think he's crippled pretty badly.
Hey, we're making progress.
We're making progress, that's right. So, uh, moving on in the agenda, uh, it's time for public comments. Is anyone having public comments?
Have it.
I just have one, and I think Pat's on the right track on that trash thing.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, right this.
On house sixty inches further.
Thank you.
And the reason why is, it's not trash until it becomes trash, it's personal property, if you take it back to Kansas City, it's personal property.
Yeah.
And then you do what you want, and we get there, and so, I know you disagree, that's why I'm like, I mean.
I I I'm only voicing what Dan brought out as a state regulation, that we can, we can't let you do that because we are, it has to be disposed of.
Well, well, uh, ten six.
Be the trash police.
I think ten six two oh one, that doesn't say that either, it says we must provide for trash. And I I've, you remember exactly what?
No, I don't.
It's, I think we have to provide a service and provide things and and I, I don't know, we have to monitor everybody's personal properties, that's it. I would say, I've been in court many times, we, you've got to be clearer than what we are if you're gonna argue something in a court.
And one I I really get concerned about is a third-party collector organizing to continue collecting.
I think we've got that covered.
That that I think.
That I think we've got covered.
That's, and I think you can enforce.
Yeah, because we've got it in there that only an authorized.
Right.
Thing, and I think that part is covered, I'm just worried about, and there's a lot of people here, including my neighbors, that live in Kansas City, and they take their trash home.
And what you get into is, you get into, start, we're getting a lawsuit with them.
I don't know, I'm just, I mean, that, I mean, that was the argument.
If you're, if you're doing those bag tags, I mean.
Right, I mean, that was the purpose of the bag tags.
That's not supposed to be for.
We got a lot of issues.
By the island residents, so.
Anyway, I saw.
That's for non-residents, partners.
Yeah, and I think that's what they're talking about, they live in Kansas City, but they come here occasionally on weekends.
Anyway.
Yeah.
They take their trash home with them, I mean, I'm guilty, when I lived in Tulsa, I took my trash back to Tulsa, put it in my, my dumpster in my house.
Yeah, well, I did that even on vacation while we're here, 'cause I couldn't figure out where the trash went, we rented some of those places, so I just take it home.
Because when you're here for a weekend, you have like maybe a half a bag, it's nothing, you know, that's why I'm telling you.
Okay. Uh, thanks, Don, any other public comments? Sure.
Oh, she's had notes.
I've got them. Sharon Lawler, nineteen Table Rock, and I just wanna make a comment that, um, the mayor did make a proclamation this week. Um, he made a proclamation that, um, September seventeenth to twenty-third is Constitution Week, and he read the proclamation at the meeting of the Daughters of the American Revolution on September tenth.
Before he went?
Yes, before.
Okay.
Well, actually, um, Mr. Sully.
Dan signed it, and I went and I read.
He went and.
And signed it.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, we didn't have that to put in the proclamation section.
I know.
Okay, or did you say the copy for trial or anything?
I did not get, I did not get a copy.
I I'll get you a copy of it.
Yeah, we we, we need to keep those promulgations firm. Okay, if you ever tell the Trumpers, going or not, okay, uh, councilmember comments? I think everyone's.
I think we're all out.
Okay. Scheduling, this is where it gets interesting, on the agenda, Dan had the budget workshop that we were talking about for nine twenty-eight, although he had originally, we'd originally scheduled that for the twenty-ninth.
Is it twenty-eight?
And I think he meant means for it to be on the twenty-ninth, is everyone okay on the twenty-ninth?
I think twenty-nine, I'm gonna be, I've got a wedding to go to next week.
So you're gone anyway.
I'm gone anyway.
I think it's one.
One o'clock or two?
One o'clock, one o'clock on the twenty-ninth. So Pat, are you gonna be disappointed if we, if you're not here to talk about?
Yeah, because I have some.
The trashy.
I love trash.
He's an advocate for trash.
He's.
It's not in there.
He's gonna do my part.
Hang on, a point of order, I I think our workshops are supposed to be one subject, so we may have to schedule some, uh, pair of workshops back to back, so they have separate agendas.
I think you're right.
So we'll have two meetings the same day.
Where did you get that, because we had workshops on VOC that had, oh, we have, we had addressed every issue we were gonna have in the next regular.
Well, if it's not a problem, then we can have it as combined, but I'll do my investigation then.
I I don't know, I mean, but I'm just telling you, that's what we did there, and I don't know.
Well, that's what the HISA does now, like, like, have twenty items.
Well, not twenty, yeah, three or four.
Well, nonetheless, we can have them back to back if we have to have two workshops.
We can, you solve one, go into another.
True, and we'll let Dan work on that agenda when he comes in tomorrow.
But I think the twenty-ninth is the date he intended, when he shared it, he had the twenty-ninth in his email.
Okay, so we're, we are, uh, even though it's in the agendas, the twenty-eighth, we're going to have the workshop on the twenty-ninth at one o'clock.
Or workshops.
Or workshops. And we want to talk about two subjects, one being the budget and the second being the enforcement of the trash ordinance. Okay? Uh, any other announcements, anyone? No, nothing, I do have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I didn't think you wanted to leave, okay, uh.
I get beat up pretty bad.
Let's go have a second.
Second.
Okay, Jerry's seconded, Ken made the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
For adjourned.
You read right there.
I'm definitely gonna feel about trying to get a soon reading in the back.